In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, PLN 1975, Chapter 231, adequate notice of this regular meeting of the Planning Board of the Township of Franklin has been provided. If everyone could please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chairman Orsini?
Here.
Carl Hauck?
Here.
Alex Karazi?
Here.
Cecile MacIver?
Here.
Councilman Chase?
Here.
Robert Mettler?
Here.
Here.
Robert Thomas?
Can't get one vote.
Yeah, he's here. Jennifer Ragnow?
Here.
Godwin Amalola. And Musafa Mandray asked to be excused. He sent me something.
Okay.
Charles Brown?
Here.
I got you, I got you.
All right, so first order of business. Thank you. That is carried to September 26th. Are we having this hearing? The one on the final agenda that says red, carried?
Oh, yes, it's coming here.
Okay, so we're having it tonight?
Yep.
Okay, so then I don't need to announce that. Okay. So first order is a regular meeting, minutes from July 11th, 2018.
There's no discussion, I move to approve.
If I can just bring up one insy little thing. You look at page eight, last paragraph, first line, I think it should say, "came forward and was sworn in." Two words missing.
And was sworn in? Okay, I'll check it when I get back there. Okay, Cecile, I believe that you...
Yes, I made the motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Okay. Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Carl Hauck?
Yes.
Alex Karazi?
Yes.
Cecile MacIver?
Yes.
Robert Mettler?
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Yes.
And Chairman Orsini?
Yes.
Okay.
Resolutions, which we have quite a few tonight, so we'll start with Ferrero. USA, PLN 1800008.
Move to approve.
Second.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Carl Hauck?
Yes.
Alex Karazi?
Yes.
Robert Mettler?
Yes.
Charles Brown?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
And Chairman Orsini?
Yes. Second one is RPM Development LLC, PLN 1700009.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Carl Hauck?
Yes.
Alex Karazi?
Yes.
Cecile MacIver?
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Yes.
And Chairman Orsini?
Yes. Bridge Acquisitions, PLN 1800007.
Move to approve.
Who was that? I'm sorry, I didn't hear. Oh, Alex?
Second, yeah.
Okay, sorry. Okay, Carl Hauck?
How come I'm not listed as having voted on this at the time? Because I was certainly there.
Which one are you talking about? Bridge?
Yeah.
Yes, you were.
When I got the resolution, your name's not on there, but I'll put you on there, so you...
No, because otherwise you wouldn't let me vote on the resolution.
I wasn't listed on the first one either, not that it...
I don't think you were here.
According to the...
Oh, wait a minute. Do we really need to vote on bridge, right?
Well, you, we have two parts to bridge. There was one that came before that they are in the middle now of complying with, and now we're going to hear another part, an amendment to it.
Okay, so we have to do...
Yeah, I know, that's coming, but...
But if worse came to worse...
This is the June 6th.
We could do them both...
June 20th.
After the next bridge. But, I mean, is it...
It's not going to make any difference.
Yeah.
Right, I love him.
We need to move forward on the first... Frankly, to adopt the resolution?
You already have the vote.
Ted, I can put you that you were there, it's fine.
We'll clean up whether you were there. We can hold off on having...
So Carl Hauck?
Yes.
Cecile MacIver?
Yes.
Robert Mettler?
Yes.
Charles Brown?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
And Chairman Orsini?
Yes. 413 Somerset Street Associates, PLN 1000011.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Carl Hauck?
Yes.
Alex Karazi?
Yes.
Robert Mettler?
Yes.
Charles Brown?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
And Chairman Orsini?
Yes. Then we have John Sudia, PLN 180004.
Move to approve.
Second.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Carl Hauck?
Yes.
Alex Karazi?
Yes.
Cecile MacIver?
Yes.
Robert Mettler?
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Yes.
And Chairman Orsini?
Yes. And last but not least, Victory Subaru Baker Automotive Real Estate LLC, PLN 1800006.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Carl Hauck?
Yes.
Alex Karazi?
Yes.
Cecile MacIver?
Yes.
Robert Mettler?
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Yes.
And Chair... No, you weren't here, that's it.
Huh?
You weren't here.
Oh, I sure was.
He recused himself.
Oh, yeah, I did.
Are you recu... Well, sorry.
But I was here. I got an early night.
Yes, you got an early night.
Oh, now I remember.
Mm-hmm.
True enough. All right, let's move to discussion vouchers. Clarkin and Vignolo for July, August, and September retainers in the amount of $2,499.99, as well as services rendered for resolutions and reviews in the amount of $1,356.25. Is there any questions regarding those?
Move to approve both of them.
Second.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Carl Hauck?
Yes.
Alex Karazi?
Yes.
Cecile MacIver?
Yes.
Robert Mettler?
Yes.
Charles Brown?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Yes.
And Chairman Orsini?
Yes. Ordinance, affordable housing development fees, I see Mark Gill leads us through that?
Yes. This is, as you know, we've settled and have had court approval of our affordable housing plan. There's a number of, I think relatively minor, housekeeping things that we need to take care of as a condition of the court approval. One of them is updating the township's affordable housing development fee ordinance. The ordinance that's before you, this is being referred to you, it's been introduced by council, so it's being referred to you under the municipal land use law. The only substantive change in this ordinance is the percentage for a collection of affordable housing development fees for residential development. Currently, our ordinance is 1% of the equalized assessed value, and this would increase it to 1.5%. This would apply to proposed residential development moving forward. Any developments that have been, you know, subject of previous development approvals would stay at the 1%. The non-residential, I believe, as you know, is set by the state, and that's 2.5%, so that's set by the state, and we can't change that. That's the ordinance.
Okay, so you want us to move that to council?
Yes, this is the normal recommendation that's referred to you, consistency with the master plan, and any comments you may have.
Question from the board?
Just a question, I'm not sure, does there need to be a public hearing on this, or is that at a later date, or...
Well, it's the...
Or is that before the council?
That's before the council.
Council has a public hearing.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
It's been introduced, and then the second reading that the public will have an opportunity to comment.
Okay.
Move to approve it and send it to the council.
Second.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Carl Hauck?
Yes.
Alex Karazi?
Yes.
Cecile MacIver?
Yes.
Robert Mettler?
Yes.
Charles Brown?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Yes.
And Chairman Orsini?
Yes. Now is the time that we'll open the meeting for public comment. This is for public comment on any planning issue that you wish to raise to the board that is not the subject of its own hearing tonight. So with that, I move to open the meeting to the public.
Second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Anybody from the public wishing to speak on anything?
Seeing no one coming forward, I would move that this public hearing be closed.
Second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And we'll go into our hearing. So the first is, oh gosh, PLN 1800009, it's one time, I'm grateful for all the zeros, and... Well, ready to hear.
I'll...
No, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna murder that, I'm just not.
So this is for the proposed minor subdivision on 53A and 53B, Norma Ave.
Good evening, my name is Jacob Davidson, I'm an attorney for the applicants who are present with me, and I have a hard time with the name as well. Mr. Odequia is here to my left, as well as Mr. Durgan. They are the owners of 53A and B, and they're the applicants today. Also with me is Mr. Ford from Van Cleef Engineering, and we are seeking a C1 and/or C2 variance to zero lot line subdivision to essentially create two fee simple interests, one for each of these gentlemen here. The basis for the application being some hardship, as well as a benefit to the community as a whole, and I'll, if the, if the panel would like some testimony as to what these guys have experienced in trying to sell or convey their parcel, we're happy to do it. Otherwise, I can defer to Mr. Ford for some of the specifics.
Yeah, probably just, I mean, you can give us a little bit of background if you want to, very brief, and then just, you know, it looks to me as though nothing on the ground was really changing. It's just to split the condominium into two different interests.
That's correct.
So, I mean, I'm sure there's a backstory to it that really doesn't necessarily have to do with any planning issues, so you can give us some of that if you, if you wish, but more than that, probably just to walk us through the variances and, and put in testimony.
Do you swear the testimony you're going to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
If you could state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address for the record, please.
Yes, Michael Ford, F-O-R-D, with Van Cleef Engineering, 32 Brower Lane, Hillsborough, New Jersey, 08844. Appeared before this board on numerous occasions.
Michael, thanks, you're accepted. We know you well.
Okay. As was introduced, this is an existing duplex dwelling with two owners now with a condominium association, there's two condos. Basically, this application is to clean up that condominium and eliminate the need for the homeowners' association for just two owners by simply bisecting the two condominium units with a fee simple lot line that goes straight down the parting line between the two dwelling units, and that carries with it a few bulk variances. Both lots would require both lot area and lot width variances, and then proposed lot 2.03 would require a lot coverage and building coverage variance, and then also a setback variance. As was stated, we received just one report. In that report, it references a prior application that created this duplex arrangement and resulted in the condominium, and also you'll notice on the existing lot, the two-family dwelling is kind of located off-center of the lot, and that was at the direction at that time to, in an effort to preserve an existing tree. So that really, I guess, really kind of resulted in the setback variance issue, the lot area, lot coverage, lot width are to do with the hardship of the existing condition, just simply being able to create fee simple lots as opposed to the condominium association. There, as was stated also, there really is no impact to the public because there is no proposed changes to the existing conditions. The two dwellings are there now, the dwelling units are there, the driveways would remain, and there is a July 30th, 2018, report issued by the Technical Review Committee of the Township, carries with it a number of suggestions, including creating utility easement because the existing utility water service lines are quite close to the proposed lot line, and including that condition, as well as the other suggestions in that report, we would agree to as any condition of approval that this board may grant.
And I think one question that I would have is just if, if we approve this in the future, many, 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 many years, and time passes, is there any chance that because of this subdivision that, you know, you can knock this down and build two houses on two very, very substandard lots for the area? I mean, or is there any chance of that? If there is, how, would you agree to protect language in the ordinance to protect that, you know, this is only if this dwelling remains as is?
Right. Well, any removal and then reconstruction would require approvals, including planning, so they would have to meet the burden of proof with setbacks and lot coverage and zoning ordinances at that time, and perhaps the applicant could agree to some condition.
Yeah, and I think you can place, make it clear in the resolution what the resol... if you approve it, and what the, what the variances are being granted for, which is for the existing two-family home.
Yeah, because I mean, I can just imagine unlikely scenario in the future where somebody demolishes the condominium, and now you have two separate lots that are 3,500 square feet in a zone that's supposed to be 7,500 square feet, and with all these setback variances and side yard variances that are basically zero because you're splitting a building, which you're really not splitting, you're splitting it virtually, but to split it in reality, and then have two dwelling units coming off as separate detached family, single-family homes, or something of that nature, which we wouldn't want because it'd be out of character for the area. That's what I don't want to have happen in the future. This is of no consequence because it changes nothing on the ground.
And what I would suggest is in the whereas clauses in the resolution, I think Mr. Vignolo can, can write something to that effect of what, what the intent of the board's decision is.
I can certainly write whatever you want. I missed that, there we go.
I, I, I think the chairman just gave some good rationale that I would recommend being in the resolution.
The board, the board could certainly require them to prepare a recorded deed restriction that limits the subdivision to the actual structure that exists, and if something, whatever happened to the structure, it needed to be rebuilt as it is, or come back before the board.
Yes, make that happen.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Bob.
I guess I have a question, if this becomes two properties. What if property owner A decides, "I need a new roof," and property owner B says, "No, you don't." Or, "No, I don't, and I'm not going to change my color of the roof, and you're going to put on brown shingles, and mine will remain gray." I mean, these are difficult, you know, if there's no agreements, if there are no agreements as to when the roof needs to be changed, how it's to be done, how it's to be funded, all of these things.
If I may, so the TRC report that we received highlighted that issue. To the resolution point, I'm happy to work with Mr. Vignolo's office to get the language right. I don't know if you prepare them, some places they ask the attorney for the applicants to prepare them. We'd have no problem with the deed restriction, or some, or some restrictive language in the resolution. And these, currently, the TRC recommended that some sort of agreement as to management of that type of foreseeable issue be drawn up and, and provided and finalized prior to finalizing this via resolution and recorded deeds, and we, we will make that happen.
So that the one guy could not paint his unit pink over the objection of the other.
I don't know if we can say it that way, but we can certainly effectuate the goal that, that you're getting at, that there, that there be an agreement of responsibility as to changes to the properties, and whatever language you might offer, aside from not changing it to pink to green. I don't think... I was gonna say, the, the problem is, we, we've agreed that there'll be an agreement, but we don't know what that agreement is, so any ideas right now? Because I can be really creative, but I'm not sure that the applicant will necessarily like my creativity. So, I mean, we can, we can require consistency with respect to siding, roof, shutters, windows, and the like, but... How about if we did the now-current consistency of those items is to remain, and no material departure from that, without some sort of approval by yourselves? Would that be something that would fit the bill?
I'm just wondering, Mr. Chairman, I'm just wondering why, why is it important for us to dictate what color they should have?
When necessarily dictating the color...
It's the consistency.
It's that we don't want, like, you don't want half the thing, you know, like Bob said, you know?
Half pink and half green.
Yeah.
Yes, since you're gonna divide it, you're gonna divide this in half, or, you know, however it gets divided down the center property line, you know, conceivably, somebody could replace the siding on half the building because they don't own the other half. So you can have a building that's two different colors separated down the middle, somebody could decide they really like red tile roofs, and you can have a red tile roof on the, on one half the building. It could start to look a little silly, but that, you know, obviously, that's just architectural style.
I've seen houses that one is green, the next one is yellow. If you go to a lot of places, they have different colors.
Yeah, but it might be, it might be by unit, you know, what I'm saying is, is we're not, we're not dictating what they can do so much as that whatever they do is consistent together. So if they're gonna paint the house pink, and I have nothing against that color, by the way, you know, that the whole house is pink, and not half of it. You know, we're not dictating what they can't do so much as that they do it consistently, so that it doesn't look, you know, but we're not...
We're, I think, not so interested in the details of the agreement as that there be an agreement.
Yeah, yeah.
I think the agreement probably needs to mention something about maintenance and clearing of the driveway, since there, it is a connected one, there are no, it doesn't appear to be a separation or anything. Oh, okay, however it is, so that...
You can shovel it onto your name.
It's not piling snow on the other one.
I, I don't, I don't think that, that...
It's okay now because you have two people here...
Get along.
...that are agreeable and everything, but if someone sells...
But that's good for business if they don't get, I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
I know, but if it gets sold, one unit gets sold, person moves in, there'll be some guidelines.
We, we had, we had already discussed between the current fee simple owners, an agreement in lieu of the condo association that, again, is defunct and not operating, that there would be shared responsibility for maintenance, things like that. Again, there is a separation between the actual structures, just want to make that clear, and as far as keeping the property in some sort of order, and not having a pink and green, we can work that language into the resolution and an agreement between the parties. I would think material changes would be sufficient to, to get at what the panel is, is iterating.
Okay, if I could.
Yeah, Bob, just let me recognize for a second, Godwin Amalola's. Go ahead, Bob.
Does the firewall extend to the roof?
I, I have Mr. Odequia, one of the owners here, who's advising that it does. I don't know if you want that on record, if you, if you would, you can swear him in, and he can answer your questions, sir.
I would, yes.
Okay. Come on up.
Just stand up and...
You could stand and raise your right hand? Do you swear the testimony you're going to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If you could state your name?
He needs to be, he needs to be on the mic when he answers.
Okay.
Yes, I, yes, I do.
Perfect. Could you state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address for the record?
Ola Fumi Odequia, I'm Mike, O-D-U-K-O-Y-A, 159 Cedar Grove Lane, Somerset, New Jersey, 08873.
Mr. Odequia, the panel would like to know if, as far as you know, does the firewall in the structures that you own go all the way up to the roof?
As far as I know, yes.
As far as I know, doesn't sound like a very definite answer.
Does the firewall go all the way up to the roof?
Yes, it does.
Why does it matter about the firewall going up to the roof? They're not here to talk about the...
Well, the reason, the reason that it matters is, is if one unit catches fire...
Right.
And that wall doesn't exist, it will go to the other unit, and that is the, the reason why it's important, I'm sorry.
Yes, I understand, that's the existing condition, no matter what, so what does that have to do with splitting the lots at the...
Well, I, I think it, I think another reason why it might matter is, is that currently, the current situation is, I think it's more of a maintenance issue. If the, if the wall doesn't extend through the roof, then what happens if the roof on one of the side fails? Can the water go into the other unit? And at least now, they're in a condo association, so at least there's some, there's a measure there for them to act cooperatively, and they're asking you to, by doing this, to essentially dissolve that condo association that is put in place to take care of the common facilities, and without the firewall, the roof is a common facility.
I think we should maybe put, or state in the resolution that that part of the house be separated, physically separated, like the rest of the house is also. And is there a basement? I didn't look on the panel.
And I, I think actually, you can confirm this, but all the condominiums that I have seen, the roof part also are separate because they stored their personal items inside the, on the attic, so the, it's clearly separated, the roof, unit to unit, but I think that's something that can be confirmed, just to be sure.
That, that is correct. These are two completely separate structures with their own firewalls going as high as they go from the time they were built, approved by this panel. And, and I think that the agreement that we've already represented, that we're totally willing to incorporate into a resolution and a side agreement, whatever it takes as far as maintaining the property in cooperation and not changing anything material as to the facade, however specific Mr. Vignolo and I get to be determined, I think that should assuage the concerns. Correct me if I'm wrong, please.
Two more questions, if I may. The first question I have is that this property line, is there any plan to separate it by fence or any other way? And what happens if somebody wants to put a fence? There's a regulation that you have to have the fence further down and so forth, I mean, have you thought about that?
There's, there's no fence contemplated this time by either of the current owners. I believe, and Mr. Ford, or you, you folks can correct me if I'm wrong, that proper permits would have to be applied for, for a fence, and/or that it would at least have to meet current zoning rules, so as far as, I, I don't believe it would be possible to put a fence in there now as it's situated. I could be wrong on that, just based on how close the two structures are, but my, my understanding is that permits would have to be applied for, and/or a fence if contemplated by some future fee simple owner, if the board were to grant this application, would have to meet, meets and bounds rules already in force.
Yeah, I think it would actually then with fences, Alex, I, I mean, Bob Thomas can confirm this, I mean, you can't put a fence right on the lot line, and since there's I mean, you can't put a fence right on the lot line, and since there's no side yard setback, it would probably have to come to the zoning board for variance, right?
Well, I mean, if I remember correctly, when I was putting my fence, there was an application I filled out, just by hand drove and gave it to them, twenty-five dollars. They looked at it, they called me, it's approved, and I put my fence up. So, if that's gonna be the case, they can do that, and they can put the fence, and then things may not look as open to look. So, this is something, and I think maybe it's not a bad idea to put it in the resolution. If you think that putting a fence here is gonna create some problem, safety, or some other ways.
I think the mechanism is already in place. I mean, it essentially would require a zoning board variance, because they'd have to put it on the lot line, there's no other way to do it.
No, I'm saying that they don't have to put it on the lot line, they can put it a little bit inside.
There's no setback, so if they wanted to put a fence down that grass strip, you can, you know. But they can't put it on the neighbor's property, but there's no setback, so they, conceivably, there could be a, too bad, it's where, I don't know if that's a bad thing or not. It would define the limits of the property between the two property owners, but they could get a permit to put a fence in that, you know, between the two properties.
At least, at least there's a permitting process in place. I mean, I don't see this as, as kind of a board, I mean, I think now we're getting a little into the weeds here, but what's your second one?
My second question is, what are the implication when tax-wise?
I don't know, but I'm not sure that really matters. I mean, assessment is the assessment. I mean, right now, it's being taxed as two single-family, two, you know, zero lot line, two attached single-family homes. As far as from a land use perspective, and the taxing perspective, I'm not sure anything's really changing.
As you say, each one of them has a tax bill, I don't know if there's any common property, there could conceivably be a third tax bill for an association. All taken care of, somebody's gonna own it all, so it should all be subject to tax.
Yeah, and I, and so, you know, I think, I think you have the gist, Peter, and, and, you know, that the board wants some protection in the future for anything, and that, you know, as it says in point two in the TRC comments, "A similar document shall be drawn up outlining responsibility requirements and restrictions after subdivision of property, dissolution of the condo association. A private water line maintenance easement shall be included due to the proximity of laterals proposed property lot." So, I mean, without, without getting, you know, going from the ridiculous to the sublime, do something sensible.
We certainly will. I have full confidence that, that Peter and I can, can get that done for you.
All right, any other discussion? We have to open this, right?
Just, just one question. You're going for a C1 or C2 variance, what is the rationale? How does this better the town, for instance, by doing this?
Well, as to this, I'm sorry, Mr. Ford?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Well, we're not changing anything on the ground. And the real motivation behind this is to clean up an otherwise awkward condominium association, existing condition. So, there's no adverse impact to any of the surrounding properties, because none of that changes. And by making it fee simple, it eliminates this awkward condominium association, which the two property owners have had real trouble with managing, and even securing potential other interested parties in purchasing the property. Which could lead, if that continues, could lead to a property that ends up being poorly maintained, because the owners don't have a vested interest in the value and maintaining the value. So, that's our purpose.
Oh, you, you don't feel it would set any precedent for?
Well, because it's such a unique property and situation, no, we don't.
I think we've done this kind of thing before, right, Mark?
It's been, I, I'd say, once every five years.
Yeah, about.
Yeah.
Yes, we do. Yeah, so, yeah, I mean, to me, it looks like a C1. I mean, there is no, I mean, with a C2, you'd like to have some clear benefit to the township, and I think, as Bob probably intimated, there probably is none, because really, nothing's changing, but nothing's really a benefit. It's more of a hardship, right, to the applicant to have the condo association for whatever reasons, reasons that I don't wanna hear, actually. But for whatever reasons that are in the background of why you came here. So, it would be more of a hardship to the applicant than a benefit to the township. That would, I would be more comfortable.
Right, and the lot line is where it is, because it has to be between the two units. Couldn't balance the lots, or?
I think Mr. Ford's testimony covered benefits to the township in terms of maintenance.
It's a stretch, but I mean, I like to have C2 variances, if possible, really be justified as a clear, better zoning alternative to the township. And to me, since nothing's changing, and I mean, it's not like the township is getting, I don't know, open space, or some sort of like view shed that we wouldn't otherwise get, or a better setback, or a better design, or better traffic. Situation on the ground changes, not an iota, so to me, it's a C1.
We, we are very confident it's a C1, and, and we think it's C2 is possible, but we prefer to go C1.
You could always make an argument, and as I'm sure.
As, as I'm trained to do.
So, anyway, I think we've, I think we've covered this in sufficient depth.
No other discussion, I'll move to open it to the public.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone from the public wishing to come forward on this application?
Seeing no one coming forward on this application, I would move that its public hearing be closed.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
We'll entertain the motion.
I'll move to approve this resolution with Peter's wording on how to.
I'll clean it up. De-restriction compliance with the terms and conditions set forth in the TRC memo from July of this year, and a easement covering the items identified by our planning staff.
Very good, thank you.
Well said. I will second.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Carl Houck?
Yes.
Alex Crozzi?
Yes.
Cecile McIver?
Yes.
Robert Mettler?
I have a very hard time with this, because it's an undersized lot, and we're making two even more undersized lots. And so, no.
Charles Brown?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Yes.
And Chairman Rosini?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
All right, so moving straight along to the next hearing, 500 Pierce Street LLC, PLN 18, zero 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 one two.
Before you guys are swared in, can everybody sign in the witness list? Thank you.
All right, good evening.
Can we begin while they're completing the witness?
Sure.
List, or? Good evening, board members, my name is Jennifer Porter, I'm the attorney for the applicant, 500 Pierce Street LLC. We're here tonight in connection with Centerpoint and 500 Pierce Street LLC's application for an expansion of the existing manufacturing and warehousing facility located at 500 Pierce Street. And in connection with our proposal, we are seeking two bulk variances for impervious coverage, as well as for the number of parking spaces at the site. In addition to that, we are seeking two design waivers. One is in connection with drive aisle width, and the other one is in connection with the maximum width of a driveway. We have five individuals who will be speaking in connection with the application this evening. First, we will have Brendan Warland, on behalf of Centerpoint Properties, they are the landlord and owner of the site. Next, we will have Frank McSorley, on behalf of PIM, the operator and tenant at the site, followed by our site engineer, who will be Mike Rodriguez of Hammerland Engineering, who will take you through the site plan, and all of the various aspects of the site and the proposed expansion, followed by additional testimony by our traffic engineer, Doug Poliniak of Dolan and Dean. And then, we will conclude with testimony from our professional planner, Charles Height of Dresner-Robin. So, if it's acceptable to the board, I'd like to proceed with our, with our first individual. Could you please state your name for the record?
You could just, we'll swear you in first, if you, do you swear the testimony you're going to provide us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
If you could state your name, spell your last name for the record, and give us your address, please.
Sure, Brendan Warland, W-A-R-L-A-N-D, Centerpoint Properties, 250 Pelé Ave, Saddle Brook, New Jersey, zero seven six six three.
Great, and Mr. Warland, could you please describe for us by whom you are employed?
I'm employed by Centerpoint Properties Trust, who's the owner. The 500 Pierce Street LLC is a subsidiary of.
And what is your present title?
My present title is Director of Construction for the Asset Management Team for the East Coast.
Okay, and how long have you been affiliated with Centerpoint Properties?
Since April of 2017.
And what is Centerpoint's role in connection with the proposed expansion of the property?
As the landlord of the building, we are honoring a proposal brought forth by PIM Brands with a request for an expansion for the building for their storage space.
Okay, and can you please describe briefly your responsibilities and familiarity with regard to the application?
Absolutely, so I'm familiar with the site plan, I'm familiar with the civil set which was submitted for the approximate seventy-two thousand square foot addition. I would be the project manager, managing the project for the course of it. And we've been in lockstep with Frank of PIM Brands, in trying to make sure that we accommodate all of their needs as our tenant.
So, it's probably not necessary to have both you and Frank, sorry, testify. I think what the board would like is probably just a brief synopsis of what the use is, in terms of manufacturing, what you plan to do there. And we probably don't need, like, construction details and project management, and then we can go to the planner and the traffic and be done. I think we can really speed this up a little bit.
You got it.
In terms of operations and use, that would all be through Mr. McSorley, and then we can go right to site engineering.
Let's head.
Perfect, because we were done, that was the last question.
Do you swear the testimony going to provide us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If you could state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address for the record, please.
My name is Frank McSorley, capital M-C, capital S-O-R-L-E-Y. Address 167A Blackwell Road in Pennington, New Jersey, zero eight five three four.
Mr. McSorley, by whom are you employed?
I'm employed by PIM Brands LLC.
And what is your present title?
I am the Director of the Plant and Facilities.
Okay, and what is PIM's relationship to the applicant? The 500 Centerpoint LLC, as a tenant?
Oh, or, yeah, or the tenant to Centerpoint Properties, sorry.
Great, and can you please describe the nature of PIM's operations at the site?
Briefly, I don't know if the board's aware, we started the operations back in 2006 with 28 employees, and we've now grown to 850 employees. We make Welch's fruit snacks, sun-made chocolate raisins, and other confections. During this time of growth, and we've been growing about 30% per year, we've eaten up all of our warehouse space by putting in other production lines.
No pun intended.
And so, we went to Centerpoint, we're at a crossroads that either we can expand and add a warehouse for our raw ingredients that have increased immensely over the years, or we have to look for a new location. So, that's why we started this process of coming in front of the board to ask for the expansion of the warehouse.
Okay, so, that's good to know. So, this is really not manufacturing so much as it's for storing finished products?
Expansion is 100% for the warehouse.
Okay, okay, that's good to know, because then, if it wasn't, then the board legitimately have questions about, you know, what you're man, actually, what you're storing, is it anything hazardous? Well, clearly, it's, okay, so that helps. So, is there anything, anything more the board needs to know about the impurpose or intent of this expansion?
Question I have is, with respect to the warehouse, are you going to be storing finished products or just raw materials?
Just raw materials, same materials that we have on site presently. Our finished warehouse is the One Heller Lane facility, we took over a couple of years ago.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, any other questions for this witness? Okay, great.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, can I ask one question?
Yeah, you can.
So, the site plan is basically expansion of, of the building, right? There's really, in terms of the parking lot, there's no changes to the parking lot, but there's a bus drop-off. Can you explain that, why that's on the plan?
The bus drop-off is a future project that PIM Brands would like to have a public tour at some time developed into it. And we're looking that after the expansion, probably 2020, we'd be coming back to the board to institute the public tour.
Okay, so that, so the expansion at this point is not for that whatsoever? But you've chosen, for whatever reason, to put the, the bus drop-off on at this point?
The reason we did that, and also the footings for the mezzanine, is that while the construction crews are in there, it's a whole lot easier to do it now than to come back and add on to it a year and a half from now or so.
The one suggestion I would make is maybe just to, if you are inclined to approve it, just indicate that we haven't had the chance to really review the, the bus drop-off. We have no idea what the actual needs are, you know, how many buses are, it's going to need to accommodate, you know, is it gonna be two buses or 20 buses? So, I think, just make it clear that when they do come back, that that issue will be readdressed.
And the applicant is fine with a condition to that effect?
Well, I kind of have a question in the back of my mind about this, because I was here for the hearing and approval for a use on Heller Drive connected with this. And I'm glad you brought up the point about future use, because I was very enthused about that project. I told a lot of people what your plans were, and nothing's happened. I think they think that I'm getting old and senile, so is something, something actually gonna go forward with this? This was supposed to be, might I say, a tourist destination to a point?
That's correct, sir.
What's the story?
Our growth has been that great with the product, the Welch's Fruit Snacks, that we had to center the entire company's focus just on meeting the production needs. Just to give you an idea, back in 2006 when we started, if I produced 30,000 pounds of fruit snacks a day, we thought we were hot stuff. Now, we do close to 400,000 pounds per day, just in our factory. Back then, if I made a million bags in a week, I thought I was, you know, the bee's knees, so to speak. Now, I do 4 million bags per day. So, that's the kind of growth we had to meet just to keep our own demand, so we couldn't put capital aside. Although, through the years, we have put capital aside for the tour. And Michael Rosenberg, who's the CEO and founder of the company, his directive to me is that after we get the expansion, the tour is the next project, period.
Well, it's good to hear, because you did create quite a bit of enthusiasm for, for the use, and there were people up and waiting to see something.
Well, I'm here to tell you that it will happen. And hopefully mine in your lifetime.
It will happen within the structure you're proposing tonight, or will there be an additional structure for it?
It will happen within the structure. The overall plan is that the Heller facility will become a welcome center, because there's adequate parking up there, some 400 spots. People would come in and would board a fruit snack bus that would come down to the driveway, drop them off. And the mezzanine footings that we're asking Centerpoint to put in, that would be developed, the second floor, and we would have a catwalk system that would go out through the plant, so people can see, you know, how the products are being made. And then we'd have a company store, so these are all the tentative plans. We have rough designs, I think I distributed to the township a couple of years back, if I remember, but I can always resend them if you'd like to take a look at them.
Sounds good, and like, in my lifetime, might be running faster than you think.
I'm in the same boat with you, sir.
With that explanation, it appears that the future is very bright for the company. I've impressed of the fact that the increment that you guys have been seeing in term of production, have been very tremendous. So, just keep it up. There are lots of people looking for jobs, and I believe your company will be able to give them what they want in term of job.
Thank you, sir, we're always looking for good talent.
All right, let's, let's hear about the plan, how about that? All right. All right. And I may not need your traffic expert either, because of the fact that I don't think there's really much.
There's no increase in terms of the number of employees, and there's no impacts set forth in our report.
Traffic expert. So your planner can probably get us through the rest of this, go through the reasoning for the variances, justification, and.
Do you want to hear from our site engineer, just to walk you through the plan and to discuss compliance with the comments? Just because otherwise we have no.
There are one or two things that they need to address.
Would you, is it better to do the planner first?
No, I think the engineer.
We have to do site engineer and then.
Engineer should go first, and what this board typically expects is.
A lot of times, we don't have both. We just.
Just go over the things that you can comply with, or you're going to modify.
Exactly. That's what we intend to do. Otherwise, we're going to comply. It'll just be conditions.
Okay. Site engineer it is. You've convinced me.
Okay, perfect. Do you want us to load it onto the screen? We have.
We have this thing available?
Available. In the interest of time, you can use the easel if that's.
Yeah, we brought both, whatever you want.
Easel.
Easel. There we go.
They're freaking thousands of dollars.
You're the one skipping witnesses. You've got to make up your mind. Either you want the dog and pony show, either you want the full show or you don't.
I'm always in favor of the full show.
All right. If I could swear you in real quick, do you swear the testimony? Are you going to provide us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Get your name, spell your last name for the record, and give us your address, please.
It's Michael Rodriguez, R O D R I G U E S. And my address is 2640 Highway 70, Suite 10B in Manasquan, New Jersey.
Mr. Rodriguez, could you please describe your educational professional background?
Sure. I have a Bachelor's of Science in Civil Engineering from NJIT. I've been a professional licensed engineer for the past nine years.
In the state of New Jersey.
In the state of New Jersey.
And you're accepted. Let's get right to the.
There we go. Did you assist in the preparation, and are you familiar with the civil engineering plans that were submitted to the board in connection with the application? Okay. Can you please walk the board through the site plan and the color rendering?
If we could just mark that quickly, since it's a color rendition, if we can make that A1 with today's date. Today is 9/26/2018.
Yes, that's correct. This is just a colored version for the ease of the board's view of the plan. If I can just walk you through the different aspects of what's proposed. As the applicant and the tenant mentioned, this is a 72,816 square foot facility being added on to the existing facility. The site itself fronts, is a corner lot. It fronts on Pierce Street and Cotton Tail Lane. Pierce Street is to the left of the page, and that is pointing north. Cotton Tail Lane is to the west, and there's existing commercial industrial properties, both to the east and to the south, bordering this facility. The site itself, there is a small parking lot that's going to be added on the easterly side, and the bus drop-off lane, which was mentioned earlier, on the westerly side. And the loading area is going to be expanded along the same loading area as the existing facility on the east side as well. Today, there are an existing nonconformity with the setbacks to the front yard towards Pierce Street. It's slightly below the 50-foot required setback, but no changes are proposed. The other variances that are going to be required for this plan are the impervious coverage here, as shown, is at 61%, where 60% is the max allowable. In addition, the parking itself is below the ordinance requirements. I believe approximately 230 parking spaces are required for the proposed project, and only 150, excuse me, to get the right number, 154 spaces are proposed, including the 20 additional spaces. Besides that, some restriping is required here at this parking facility to provide the adequate number of handicapped stalls at the existing parking facility. As far as grading and drainage for this property, today, there's an existing detention basin that wraps the, at the corner of Pierce and Cotton Tail Lane, that handles the existing runoff from the site today. However, the increase in impervious coverage to meet the stormwater regulations requires additional detention and also water quality treatment, which are provided via another ground detention system located in this green area at the back of the building. That's going to drain water from the parking area, the loading area in the building, and attenuate the flows to meet all regulations. The water quality treatment for all paved surfaces will be handled through a manufactured treatment device, which just essentially swirls the runoff within the structure. And all sediments and oils will be held in that structure only to be maintained on a regular basis. The landscaping and lighting being proposed will consist of just, we're clearing, this area today is woods. We're putting back trees where we can in this area of green space, only to be left open because of the detention system. No other trees or shrubs can be placed in that area. For lighting, there's going to be pole-mounted fixtures around the parking and loading areas and the bus drop-off area, as well as building-mounted fixtures at approximately 25-foot mounting heights. And those will be LED fixtures, more modern features. There were a number of review letters, if we can get into that, that we'd like to address.
So could you speak to the Franklin Township Sewerage Authority comment letter?
Right. There's going to be a proposed sanitary sewer lateral for this facility. Although no additional flow will be sent through that lateral towards the sewer line in Cotton Tail Lane, it's just there for any future uses that were discussed earlier. Franklin Township Sewerage Authority asked that a formal submission be made.
So we will comply?
We will comply with that.
Okay. And then with respect to the Franklin Township Traffic Safety Bureau, they had no comments. So there's nothing to discuss. With respect to the Environmental Commission, they requested that we look to the addition of pervious pavement as a way to reduce impervious coverage at the site. Could you please explain why the current proposal, you know, is necessary and that the variance relief is justified, which will be further explained by our planner?
Right. The proposed impervious coverage, this building addition is 200 feet from the existing building wall. That was a requirement the tenant had for the storage space. That with the parking lot that they requested, and this loading area and bus drop-off area, there's really no room to reduce that without eliminating parking spaces or loading, or the, you know, eliminating what they're looking to do. That really sets the number at 61 exactly.
I think the suggestion is that the new parking area could have pervious pavement and the appropriate, you know, crushed stone beneath it, and that would slightly decrease the runoff, slightly increase the infiltration. And it would probably, well, I don't know whether it would really change things to the extent of, you know, one over, 1% over in impervious surface, but it would certainly be a good attempt to relieve the effects of the amount of impervious surface that you have.
Right. The only issue with that is the ordinance, I don't, I haven't found it in the ordinance. I was looking for that. That allows relief from the impervious coverage requirement.
I think here, let me, so if it's pervious pavement, it still counts. So if you're proposing pervious pavement, it's still going to be 61%.
Right.
But then the question is, as potential mitigation for that variance, can you do the pervious pavement? So I think that's the question. Then you do pervious pavement in the new parking lot.
I mean, we could do it. It just won't relieve the variance. Is that right? They won't.
It won't relieve the variance, but it would be, the board may decide that that might mitigate the impacts of the variance.
I would have to, I mean, ask my client if that's something they'd be willing to do.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a comment, if I may. If you're talking about 60 versus 61%, the problem that I have seen, at least I can speak of the facility that we have, these previous, especially the ones that you put these blocks that at the middle, they have holes where the water goes, and you can put grasses. It really creates a safety problem. So I think it's very important to.
This is different. Carl, can you explain briefly what?
Unless it's a better system.
I think there's a different.
Yeah, okay.
So porous pavement has larger voids. It looks like a pavement, a typical paved parking lot. However, it allows water to run off into the pavement and be absorbed through that layer in a stone sublayer and be infiltrated into the ground. Question I have for the engineer is, did you do, you know, soil logs out there and permeability tests to see if it's even feasible? Before you answer that it's possible.
Right. We do have permeability tests and seasonal high-water table research that was done in conjunction with the hydrologic soil group. It's mentioned in my stormwater report. That testing wasn't done in its entirety, but the initial reaction was that almost the entire project area was of a hydrologic soil group G type, which was poorly draining. I would have to look at it more closely to see if, at the elevations of the proposed pavement, if a system like that would be feasible, or if additional underdrains would be required. My initial reaction to that, too, I have used that on other projects, but that, you know, being that the drive aisle sees the most impact of vehicles coming in and out, typically it's not done on the drive aisle. It would be just into the parking spaces themselves.
Mark, if buses are going to be using this newly paved area, they're a lot heavier than cars.
Well, we're talking about two different areas. On the lower part of the plan is the drop bus offs. We're talking about the employee parking area.
In the rear.
All right. So you're not talking about where the buses are going to be for the new.
Yeah, we would never allow a design like that to happen for a loading that type.
I wanted to just, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to say one more time that I have seen with those blocked previous, you have a large area, and if you have people with high heels, that's a potential problem. I just want to, whatever design you have, but please keep the safety in mind.
Have you been in Middle Bush Park?
Not in Middle Bush Park. I'm talking about.
It's not the same thing. It's two different things. It's.
It's solid pavement.
Right. Porous pavement and porous pavers, two different things. And the porous pavers, which you would, you see a paver, something we have in the 911 Memorial, that do have this stone between it, that would classify as a stormwater feature for them to be able to get some credit for, to allow for infiltration. But the pavement area would look very similar to a parking lot.
Excellent.
Yeah. We could look at that subject further and it be a condition.
Right. So the applicant would agree to that as a condition, subject to the engineering working and allowing it based on the soil types.
That's fine. All right.
Okay. Next, with respect to comments by Robert Russo from CME Associates, the board engineer. Is it your understanding, Mr. Rodriguez, that we can generally comply with all of the comments set forth in that comment letter, and that we will work out the specific details with regard to that compliance with CME?
Yes.
Okay. And with respect to the comment letter by Mark Healy, Director of Planning, is it your understanding, Mr. Rodriguez, that we can comply with all of the comments and have provided testimony in connection with the additional comments set forth in his report?
Yes.
Okay. Lastly, with respect to the comments by Mr. House, the Director of Fire Prevention, in the Office of Fire Protection, could you please give the board testimony regarding why we cannot comply with the comments in connection with fire hydrants in the driveway?
Mr. House recommended that if an additional fire access drive be required at the southerly side of the building to be able to access this face of the building, you know, for fire reasons. And in addition, there's an existing water main that runs along the easterly side of this loading area that ends in an existing hydrant at the end here. He asked that we extend that hydrant and loop the hydrant behind the, loop the fire, I'm sorry, loop the water main behind the building and then tap it back into the water main that's located on Cotton Tail Lane. Both those requirements, I understand, are typical for fire officials to recommend. However, this building itself is going to be used, is going to use a fire suppression system called ESFR. And that's a more, it stands for a early, EFSR, early fire suppression response, if I got that right. But that's basically a high-tech, high-pressure system that in case of a fire would, you know, mitigate any any fire happening within the building. There'll be a fire pump associated with it that would maximize the pressure in this line and boost it through the system. I feel like those features outweigh the benefits of having additional hydrants or looping a water main or having access to the building back here. Additionally, there is no fire access to the southerly side of the existing building today. It's just a wooded area. For those reasons, you know, I think, you know, we've provided enough fire protection.
So point to your one fire hydrant again. Where's that?
It's located at the southerly, southeastern point of the loading area.
So if you were to, if you were to want to have to attack a fire from the Cotton Tail Lane side, what would you then do? Is there a fire hydrant on there, or how would?
I believe there are fire hydrants along Cotton Tail Lane.
I would say this is something you would need to work out with John House. However, of recent applications, this has been a requirement from the Fire Prevention Department and pretty standard. There is a water vein in Cotton Tail, which you can connect to and create the loop that he's requesting. You know, I'm not comfortable waiving that requirement or his one comment.
The applicant's concern with respect to that comment is, it's varied. So Mr. Rodriguez presented the technical aspects with respect to compliance and the other features of the site with regard to fire protection. There are other business and operational considerations that go along with compliance with those comments. The fact of adding an additional roadway of that length and width would add a significant amount, 3% additional percent of impervious coverage on top of the variance that we're already seeking. And for the reasons that were stated, we don't believe that that would be necessary. And further, and perhaps most importantly, in connection with the application, it would require the tenant and the landlord to recommence the entire cost feasibility of the site, because it is one of the number one driving factors. And so they are not in a position this evening to be able to commit to agree to that as a condition, that it's the one thing which is a problem with respect to the applicant for those reasons, and would require them to go back and renegotiate the deal in connection with, you know, their ability to stay at the site versus looking at other options.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I agree with Carl that of the comments on fire prevention, the loop main has been a pretty standard thing that we've had, and probably something that, you know, you can do without altering the site. As far as the driveway goes, I don't necessarily see a need for it. You know, if we were to approve this plan tonight, we would approve it with the 61% impervious coverage and not up to 64%. So if you couldn't negotiate that with him, you'd have to come back to us, and we'd have to grant you that variance. But, I mean, I would not necessarily. But, I mean, I would, I would not necessarily see the need for, for the driveway. But I think the loop main makes a lot of sense. I mean, you can certainly make your arguments to, to John in terms of the fire suppression system. But, I mean, the loop main doesn't, doesn't take much out of the site. I mean, you don't have to, it's not as, as bad as the driveway, right? I mean, you can physically do it with the site and that generally has been something that we've done with most of these types of M1 sites. But the driveway, I'm, I'm, I'm not stuck on that.
Yeah, and, you know, you ought to have at least a hydrant there at the southeast corner. Extend the, the existing line to the southeast corner, have a hydrant there. And then the benefit of continuing to Cotton Tail is you then, the line is filled from either side, either from Pierce Street or from Cotton Tail. And that's why we always like to have a looped line. Whether or not you have any hydrants along that side, you're going to be excavating for the underground detention basin in any case. So it shouldn't be much more of a problem. Obviously, you gotta pay for the pipe, but not much more of a problem to continue the looped line down to Cotton Tail. Does that seem reasonable, Mike?
Yeah, no, it does. And I mean, you know, again, like you, and I think you made the argument, the way that the site is now, basically what you're building is, is woods today, right? Or trees or what? Um, there's no driveway on that side of the building now. Doesn't really change the fact that you're expanding, why you would then need a driveway when you don't have one. And I, again, I think since there's access from Cotton Tail Lane on both sides, and if you loop the main and then you, you, you know, explain what kind of fire suppression that you have in there, I think, you, you know, your argument would win the day. Also, the fact that, you know, we don't really want to increase the impervious coverage any further. So I think, I think that's the, the way we try to address that.
Would it be possible to, um, in, instead of having an asphalt pavement, a different type of surface? No?
Hmm?
Don't, they don't want it, okay. Right, sorry about that.
Yeah, no, I'm not asking you to pave the loop, just make a loop underground.
If I could just, I'll just start from my opinion, just from a planning perspective, that if the board felt that, um, the driveway should go in, I think from a C2 perspective, it's a public safety, um, situation. And if, if Mr. House, as his, you know, position of Director of Fire Prevention thinks it's necessary, I think you might, you know, be cautious in, you know, replacing his expertise with your opinion. I mean, he's, he's made this, these recommendations. I think from a planning perspective, you could easily justify the variance to go the additional three percent if that additional three percent is to put in this driveway.
Yeah, I, I mean, you probably could, but, I mean, the thing is, the way the site is now, the, the woods or whatever on that side come up to the building and they don't have a driveway. This is just a longer building, so if you were to agnostically put this building down today from scratch, right? That's what would be there, so.
That's correct, yeah.
I don't, I don't want to see what really changes. I mean, if you didn't have access from Cotton Tail, I think that would be different. But I would push back on this to John because, for comment number two. I, I really don't want the impervious coverage, I, I mean, and with it, see what wins the day. We'll, we'll, we'll word it such as, uh, whether.
Well, the chairman, you think that with their future expansion, meaning that they're going to be bringing buses and tourists and so forth, not having that access road might pose a safety problem?
If I could just address that, when we come back in connection with the future use of the site, that will be the subject of site plan approval and that would be a perfect opportunity when, you know, when we're looking at various additional uses of the site or utilization of the site as a museum, um, for, for the imposition of additional control measures such as fire safety considerations now that we're, you're bringing the public into the site. But at this point in time, it's simply an expansion of the site to allow for additional warehousing because they've outgrown their existing operations and space. In the future, when, when they come back in order to do the museum, they'll be subject to site plan approval and so it will undergo a whole round of comments with respect to fire.
Before the buses come, we, you, you would have to have another hearing. Is that, that's what you're saying?
Yes.
And this is simply for storing material?
So this is absolutely not the only bite at the apple. That's what I'm saying. In connection with, with that, if the board has a concern with it, you know, before there are any additional uses proposed other than this expansion that's before you tonight, we will be back before you and you can readdress those concerns.
Like, I don't see a problem with not having a driveway for this part of the, simply what, what exists.
Exactly.
I, I just want to make sure I understand what the board's contemplating because we kind of talked it around a little bit. Are we saying that you'd like them to put in, uh, the looped water main, but you would like them to go back to Mr. House over the second issue in light of the information they provided this evening? Or the board is inclined to not require that entirely, uh, based upon what they've provided this evening? Just so I can kind of, because we keep talking about the potential for coming back if, uh, Mr. House isn't satisfied, but obviously we have to have a mechanism for him to be satisfied. So I just need to know what you're thinking because obviously I need to write it up.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, at least in my mind, I'm not looking to like dismiss his comment number two about the paved driveway, but I'm willing to make these arguments that, like Bob just said, doesn't exist now. Various other things, the fire suppression system, et cetera. And then further say, we don't want really to increase any more impervious coverage if we don't, can't. And lastly, but not least, if there is a problem and, you know, because of these tours and whatever, like you say, you would be coming back for that and then we could maybe address something at that time. But I'm all for the looped water main, so let's try to make that the argument.
So the answer, did you say, you, you said a lot of words, but I'm not sure you answered my question. You have a.
I think, Mr. Chairman.
I think the way you described it was adequate, that the board would like to see, uh, supports Mr. House's request for the looped line, um, but the board does not support the request for, uh, the driveway along the, it's actually the south side of the building. I think Mr. House refers to the east side, but that's because the north arrow is off, as was pointed out in comments. Uh, the board does, does not support his request for a driveway there. And.
And so, Mr. Chairman, excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
I don't think Ted did any better than me.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me. If, if Mr. John, uh, House comes back and, uh, demands that because of the safety, this driveway is needed, can board approve the sixty-four percent variance to allow them to proceed with that? Can we put that as?
I, I think that's a good suggestion. I think maybe to cover all bases. Perhaps the resolution should state the board's opinion that it's not necessary. But in case there are conversations with John House leads to that driveway having to be there, then the variance is in place for the sixty-four percent.
But let's take it a step further. We consider that it's not necessary at this point. Considering this application for the use that they're applying tonight, when they can come again with a application for tours and a school bus thing, you might address it again.
But they're building this now and they may come back in three years, they may come back in five or the other. What I'm saying is, if John House is insisting and, and they can't work out the details, it may help both sides if you, again, make your opinion clear that you don't think it's necessary for the reasons you don't think it's necessary, but put in there the allowing up to the sixty-four percent in case it ultimately, the decision is to put it in there. So both sides are.
I have one, one clarifying question. Does it have to be a paved driveway?
Yes, it's just for trucks.
What, what he has in mind is a driveway that will bear a ladder truck that can go up high and shoot water down on the roof of the building in case it gets to that point.
Well, look, he, here's the thing. We don't, I, I, I don't think it's necessary at this point.
And John Howke has not always, John House has not always gotten everything he asked for.
Well, see, at, that's the end of the day, you know, it, it is the board's decision with expert, you know, input. It's not that, you know, e- everybody, whether it's sewer water, I'm not signaling out fire prevention, doesn't necessarily, in the big planning scheme of things, have to get everything they want. And, you know, as a planner, uh, and planning, I don't see the need for this because there's access on two sides. We're going to have them a loop main and they got this fire suppression system, you know? And at the end of the day, how freaking flammable are fruit snacks? If they're really flammable, would people be eating them? I mean, is it really that bad? I mean, is there a lot of cardboard, paper, stuff like that? I, I mean, just, just go talk to them, but at the end of the day, I don't think it's necessary. All right, I've, I've probably had enough of this argument. Can, can we move on to something else? I, I just had, Mr. Chairman.
I, I don't care how you. I'll write whatever you want, but you, you keep making, you're, you're almost done and then you add in, just go talk to them. So either they're going to go talk to them or they're not going to go talk to them.
Okay.
So I need to know which one.
We don't think it's necessary right now.
At this point, right.
Full stop.
That's, all right, how about that?
I had one question, uh, just a clarification. When you were talking about the water treatment, you mentioned the sediment and oil. Can you elaborate on the oil part, please?
Yes, um, so what's required, uh, from stormwater regulations to provide something called eighty percent TSS removal, total suspended solids. So I've achieved that through a combination of, uh, what are called swirl devices. And those swirl devices basically take the runoff from the pavement that, that drains into the catch basin or inlets and, um, basically swirls in this device. And, um, that tends, that, that, that swirl, um, tends to settle all sediments and debris to the middle of the device, which has like a sump.
I guess my question was the oil, where is the, what's the source of oil that, that, that?
Uh, just from all cars and pavement and stripping.
So there, there's nothing that is going to be?
It's state standards that we're meeting, yeah.
Okay, I just want to get a clarification.
Yeah. No, 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 it's just from, uh, normal pavements and trucks and it's just.
Does the swirl device have to be maintained?
Yes, and we have an operation and maintenance manual, um, that we prepared that's going to, you know, basically.
So it'll be regularly maintained?
Yes, required to be maintained.
Uh, can you talk about the bus drop off really quickly? I know it won't be in use, uh, once this is built, at least not right away. But the angle is really tricky. Especially if you're going to allow the bus to turn in both directions when exiting, uh, so can you explain that?
I, I think it's intended to, uh, be kind of like a pull-off from the, uh, uh, northbound side of Cotton Tail Lane. So it'd make a right turn in and, and right turn out.
Right turn only.
Yeah, I think we'd have to force that, so. Um, but, but also in addition for, you know, day one, when this facility is open, uh, there is going to be bollards and a chain preventing anybody from accessing this area. It'll just be built, ready, ready for the bus drop off, but not in use and chained off.
Well, actually, the bus drop off should be built to standards that it can bear a fire truck and there should be provisions, and John House can explain them, that if a fire truck has to get there on, on an emergency basis, it can, you know, there are knock-down bollards or something.
Right.
I mean, he, you know, I'm not going into the details of that, but that's fairly standard. But you see, the bus drive, uh, lane there is providing what he wants from that side of the building. So I think it's an important part of trying to satisfy him.
Okay, yes, that's something we can, um, get his opinion on.
We're trying to make this viable without much more expense.
Right, right. Okay, uh, I was going to say, yes, we'll work that out with him, a, a method for him to open this area up in case of an emergency.
Yeah.
Sounds good. All right. I think we're through all the comments, are we?
Yes.
All right.
And so we would be done with the testimony from Mr. Rodriguez and then we would only require very brief testimony from our planner just to justify the variances and the, and the waivers.
Do you swear the testimony you're going to provide is the truth, all truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
If you could state your name, spell your last name for the record and give us your address, please.
Hi, Charles Hight, last name spelled H E Y D T, um, with the firm Dresner-Robin. Our headquarters are in Jersey City at One EverTrust Plaza, Suite 901.
And you're a certified planner in the state of New Jersey? Sorry, if you did say that, I missed it.
Yeah, I didn't qualify yet, but.
Oh, okay.
I am a professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I also am a member of the American Planning Association, American Institute of Certified Planners, and I have a master's in city and regional planning.
You're accepted as a witness, okay.
Great, Mr. Hight, are you familiar with the site plans and other documents that were submitted to the board in connection with the application?
I am.
And are you familiar with the township zoning code?
I am.
And what did you do to prepare for your testimony this evening?
Uh, part of my preparation involves a review of the site plan, um, and a review of the zoning requirements from the Township Zoning Ordinance, as well as, uh, visits to the site to document existing conditions. We also did prepare an aerial, uh, exhibit to provide the board some context. Um, I know this board has really delved deep into the details of the two requested variances, so I think everyone has a strong grasp of what, of what we're requesting. Um, but I can provide additional comments on how this project and the proposed attributes fit into surrounding properties, if, if you'd like. But, um, that was the nature of my, uh, project as well as preparing, um, the specific statutory requirements to support the variances.
So I don't think you have to spend much time on the parking variance, if any time at all, because this board's always looked very favorably on reduction of parking if it's not needed or banking of parking. So if you don't need, I don't know how, almost what, eighty spaces or whatever, then, uh, and, and you feel that the parking is adequate for the function of the site, um, you know, I think we, we look very favorably on that.
Yeah, and, and just to add on that, with existing uses, there's a known demand for parking. So you can work off that. It's, it would be different if it was a proposed operation, a proposed business, no known specific number of employees, but that's not the case here. In addition, the additional square footage is not going to increase operations, it's just solely for warehouse. Um, to my knowledge, no employees are added. So, uh, I would agree with you that there's no substantial, um, detriment to not providing the parking uh, and there's no substantial impairment to, uh, the Zone Planner zoning ordinance and it, and it meets the needs of the operator.
And as you said, we, I think we, uh, we discussed the impervious coverage fairly thoroughly already. The only thing I think we need from you is, you know, your ex, your, your testimony as to C1, C2.
I, I agree, and this board is well familiar with impervious coverage. The two main points that it addresses are stormwater runoff and heat island effect. In this case, the application, uh, does involve a, uh, an additional stormwater management system to capture the additional pervious coverage from the, impervious coverage from the roof and the proposed parking areas and, and bus drop off. So that's the direct mitigation step to offset stormwater runoff. Um, and in my mind, from a technical standpoint, uh, the benefits of this project, including that sort of stormwater management, offset any detriments that come with the, uh, increase in pervious coverage on site. Um, from a broader sp- perspective, it also does allow for the site to be utilized at, to a higher degree. Um, it maintains the existing business on this site, um, and accommodates their needs for future, future growth and, and operational needs. Um, with respect to the municipal land use law, um, both variances do need to, uh, show that they further the purposes of that law. Um, to that respect, I think purpose A is very clearly defined, that any municipal action, um, to guide the appropriate development in the state of New Jersey is a purpose of the law. An action to approve this project, um, by this board would be a municipal action. Um, and I think that you've considered all the, um, positives and negatives that you can make an appropriate decision to approve the project. Also, uh, purpose G, to provide sufficient space for a variety of land uses, in this case being industrial land use. And as mentioned earlier, it's providing an additional square footage of building to meet the needs of an existing business owner, which provides sufficient space. So I do think that this project furthers that purpose. And, and that's really it for planning. Um, there is the, the negative side of the, um, statutory requirements. I briefly mentioned them, no substantial, um, detriment to public welfare. I think this board, um, specifically with the fire prevention issues, ha- has a good handle on the fact that the building is fully suppressed, that there, not only is access on two main front, street frontages, but also in the rear of, or the one side yard. So on three sides of this building, there's access for, for vehicles and fire equipment. And, and there will be improvements to the water main system, provide that fire prevention system. So, again, with those improvements to the project, there's no substantial detriment to public safety, and there's no substantial impairment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance. We are requesting very moderate relief from those requirements. And again, this is an industrial use in the M1 Lite Manufacturing District. So I think that the requested variances do meet that statutory requirement and can be granted by this board.
Mr. Chairman, one question.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there's two other items of relief. One is the drive aisle width and the width of the driveway. With respect to the drive aisle, the requirement is twenty-six, twenty-four is proposed in the, um, in the employee parking area. And then the, the driveway width, I believe, is the cotton tail, which is the bus drop off. I would think perhaps you could justify the parking lot width by the fact that it's a, an employee parking lot. Twenty-four feet, first of all, is a pretty standard width. Also, being an employee parking space as, or parking lot as opposed to a shopping center has very low turnover. So I would, I would think that that could be justified, 'cause it's a kind of, again, a standard width, and there's no impact to that. And the fifty-foot drive aisle width is, is necessitated by, I believe, the angle of the drop off for the, for the bus drop off, and also the need for the turning radii for the buses. Would you agree with that, and do you interest, do you see any impacts from those variances?
I, I do agree with design waivers, the test is, is there a practical alternis, alternative that's reasonable? And in this instance, the requested relief in those design waivers, one being the twenty-four-foot drive aisle, is a very common standard, especially for facilities that don't have a, a large amount of public interaction or vehicles coming onto site. They're all employee use. Twenty-six feet for driveway aisle sometimes is found in industrial settings for distribution centers to provide them sufficient space. But this isn't a distribution center, there's not a high volume of traffic coming in and out. And with regard to the bus curb, the, the drive aisle width for the bus drop off, I agree. It, it is a practical alternative, considering that it's a one-way. And I imagine that buses will need that sufficient turning radius. I don't imagine, they will need that sufficient turning radius, given the, uh, the angle at which they need to drive onto a site and exit.
Any questions for our planning? Okay, great. I guess we'll go ahead and open to the public on this?
Moved open to the public.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody from the public wishing to come and speak with regard to this application? Looks like there might be-
Yeah, I'm gonna speak. Vince Dominick, I'm the Township's Economic Development Director. First thing I need to thank PIM for being such a great corporate citizen. They're one of the few companies in town that every time we need something or ask, they respond immediately. And I'm gonna be quick, 'cause you spent a long time. I think it's very important, the conversation you had about John's report, that you specifically state in the resolution that you've waived their requirement for the pavement, so that we don't have to have, you know, a two-month discussion about that. And I think you require them, the applicant, to talk to John about that, and the water main to find the most cost-effective. But I think you really, based on the discussion tonight, you should waive that, so we don't go back and forth and have to spend months. I will facilitate that discussion between the applicant and John, and I will explain the board's decision, whichever way you go to him, in depth.
Yeah, essentially, essentially my instruction to Peter was to say that we don't think it's necessary at this time, make, to make-
I, 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 I think you should be very direct, in my opinion, and you either waive it or don't waive it. Because giving direction, that's direction. You should waive the requirement, which you have the complete legal right to do, you know, 'cause you're doing one or the other. In the middle, in the middle just makes things very murky. So waive it, or don't waive it.
I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think I'm in agreement with that particular sentence, waived.
Alright, point taken. Thanks, Vince. Anybody else?
Seeing no one else coming forward, I would move that this public hearing be closed.
Second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any other board questions or discussions before I turn it over to Jennifer for any last words she may have before we vote?
Well, just, uh, for the historical record, the first use of this building was as a parts distribution warehouse for Mercedes-Benz years ago. So, but other than that, no, that's it.
That is from memory lane.
Okay.
We thank the board for its consideration of this application this evening. We believe the testimony that was presented by both our fact witnesses, as well as our expert testimony by our planner, our site engineer, has justified the extent of the relief being sought tonight, which is site plan approval in connection with the expansion, as well as the two bulk variances for parking and impervious coverage, as well as the design waivers that were requested in connection with the driveway, and in connection with the, the width, for the, the drive aisle width. And we would ask that the board vote on this application this evening.
I entertain the motion.
I'll move to approve the application and to make this a black and white decision with no gray in it. That would include waiving the driveway, the extra driveway.
No language about, well, we could accept the additional impervious surface if he stands firm, because that would just encourage him to stand firm.
I'm saying waive, waive the driveway, but include the underground loop.
Yes.
Second.
Object to the rest of the condition?
Yes, of course, of course.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Carl Hauck?
Yes.
Alex Karazi?
Yes.
Cecile McIver?
Yes.
Robert Mettler?
Yes.
Burles Brown?
I'm gonna vote yes, but I, I do respect the professional opinion offered by the fire chief or director. So I hesitate to vote yes, but I vote yes.
Uh, Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Jennifer Ragno?
Yes.
And Chairman Mercini?
Yes. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Great evening. Alright, so at this point, I think Vince, you might be up for these ordinances here. So these are, this is sort of now a work session here, that, um, so Vince wants to talk to us about a couple of ordinances that we would like, that he would like to see us discuss and potentially send forward to council.
As part of my job as the Economic Development Director, I listened to the concerns of the, you know, that we get from the, the business community. And our last Economic Development Subcommittee of, of Council, which Councilman Chase is a member of, we discussed several changes that had come up with some of the businesses. The one was, if you remember, ten, twelve years ago, Bob will remember, we had Ink Sanity. We got, we gave them a zoning permit to put a tattoo parlor on Hamilton Street. They functioned very well for a couple of years. The council at that time saw fit, when they had, they changed the ordinance and added, retail goods and services are permitted except body art establishments, in response to the one tattoo parlor. Subsequent to that, that applicant, when they moved across the street, had to go through probably ten thousand dollars in expense to move across, 'cause they needed to use variance, and site plan approval. As most of you know, unlike what people thought tattoo parlors were twenty, thirty years ago, they're nowhere near the same. Most of the people who got tattoos now are teenagers and grandmothers. So it's not, I'm, I'm just, I'm just telling you, if you go and you talk to the tattoo parlors, that's eighty percent of their clientele. It's no longer, it's no, it's no longer, you know, the bikers and the, the crazed drunk sailors and everything. It's just a totally different atmosphere. They're regulated by the state, we actually have an ordinance that regulates them also. My recommendation and from the Economic Development Subcommittee as counsel is what we're doing in the ordinance is, we're deleting where it says, "Accept Body Art Establishments", and we're making, specifically making body, body art establishments a permitted use. And then, at the wonderful suggestion, 'cause we forgot to do this, we also added a second ordinance, and we'll put them together as one, but I made it simple. The second ordinance just defines what a body art establishment is, so that everyone understands that. So that, that would be our recommendation, as we always follow before we give a land use ordinance to council, we discuss it at the planning board level to make sure that you're okay with it before the council introduces that type of ordinance. The, uh, the second, the second ordinance is in regard to digital signage. That's been a discussion for years and years with people on both sides of the issue. I probably get three or four comments, phone calls, discussions a week regarding digital signage, because that's the new technology. We've drafted an ordinance that, once again, the Economic Development Subcommittee has, has recommended, that allows for digital signage, same size as all the, it doesn't change the size requirements for any business, or any zone, or anything else. They still have to conform to the same size, but they, they have to be, they can't scroll or smoke or anything, they can't move or blink. Alls it is, is the new technology that we would allow them to change, that, that could change automatically, you know, once every eight seconds, like when we did the billboard ordinance, it doesn't allow them to scroll or flash or do anything else. Alls that is, is keeping up with the new technology, that every time that an applicant comes in to get some signage, we say they can't do it, they're like, huh, my other stores in other towns, I can do it, or they don't have any problem with it. So we wanna keep up with the times, and from an economic development standpoint, it's, it's a good selling point that they can do that. So that's why we drafted that ordinance.
Vince, can you just go over some of the, you, you'd mentioned generally, but for example, number one, you know, what the intent of that, the purpose of that, and there's a couple others, like you mentioned eight seconds.
Yeah, the, the-
No sequencing, what does that mean and why it's in there?
Yeah, the, the, the first requirement of digital sign, only one digital sign display area should be permitted per sign structure. So that means if we have one of those big, tall signs, they can only have one. They can't have all six of the businesses advertised on that, because then you're gonna be going, gonna go like this. Now, of course, they have the opportunity to go for a variance, which is, which you always have the opportunity, but the intent is, they, they're gonna have to make a choice. If, if it's, if it's a sign that has Planet Fitness on it, and six smaller ones, and they wanna have one of them, that's gonna be their choice to provide which sign in accordance with the sign, the size requirements. But the point is that if they can change what is shown, they could run through all the six businesses. It's just in succession, rather than all at the same time. They, they, they could do that, but their sign would be only that portion of that total, that total sign area. We, we would not allow them to have the, the one big unless they came.
But, you know, they would have to figure it out, how they would do it, but the example would be-
Couldn't be any bigger. All I mean is, you, you would have whatever sign this provides for, but because it can change, it could advertise, and if you have a number of businesses in the parking lot, they can advertise sequentially. They, they, they- They don't all have to be up at once. Absolutely, and, and they very well might do that, because that would be beneficial to, to all those businesses. They would be able to advertise different things at different times.
I'm curious how you determine eight seconds?
Well, the, the eight seconds termination was based on when we were drafting, actually Mark drafted it, the, the billboard ordinance, and Mark did a tremendous amount of research to determine the amount of time that it's kind of accepted, that is not, it's his least destructive thing. So when you got eight seconds, chances are in those eight seconds, unless you're stuck in a traffic jam, given the site distance, you're most likely gonna be passing, so your eyes, that's just a, that's a standard amount. I mean, we could change that to anything. That was kind of standard based on the information that Mark had gotten when we were talking about billboards that we put in this ordinance to be consistent with that.
Ultimately, it comes from the, um, the DOT incorporated that into their regs for the regulation of digital billboards along their highways.
So, so would there be any sort of clause to ensure that businesses are not disadvantaging other businesses through the use of the digital signs, in terms of what priority is given to whom and how, in order of that?
Well, hon- honestly, that, that's, that's between the person who has the sign and their, and their landlord. I mean, that's, that's, that really isn't our, that really isn't any of our business. If, if the, if they wanna negotiate and put up one sign that can have, you know, all ten tenants, or one tenant wants to pay the extra amount for that, that's, honestly, that's not our concern. That's up, that's up for them to, to figure it out. We only thought that it was appropriate to have one, because, once again, we didn't wanna have eight individual signs on one big-
Yeah, I understand, but the reason to- The reason to now have one is, and to restrict it to one means that they cannot have their individual sign. So if for some reason, uh, the, the master owner wanted to discriminate against a particular business, they now cannot come still-
They could still have their individual fixed sign.
You could still have, you, you could still have all the other signage, you can only have one digital sign.
Right.
Like, if you look at the ones at East End, Planet Fitness can have that digital, and all the other ones would have to be your normal signage.
Perfect.
So they still get their sign.
Got it, thank you.
I think what's also good about this is it opens the door to using the, the new technology, but, uh, really most, what would you say, eighty percent of the people who put up signs have to come for a variance because of size anyway, and that's still in effect, applies to this, so, so you have an additional control.
Yeah, mo- most of the, the bigger buildings and the, always come to the zoning board. And actually, when they've come to you for the site plan, they're asking you, so you will also have control over that, because this does not increase the size of the signs. It only allows them to use the digital in a very limited way, in exactly the same size that's permitted now.
Vince, uh, this is just for businesses or any other commercial or-
This is for all, all, all commercial signage.
What about house of worship? Can they have?
Well, the houses of worship is, is, is commercial. They, the house of worship right now is allowed to have a twenty-foot, twenty-five square foot sign.
Okay.
A lot of them come in and ask for a larger, and then this, this board, or typically the zoning board, then has the ability to put restrictions. Maybe they only want twenty-five square feet of the digital, or there has to be, which both boards have done before, instead of allowing them twenty or thirty feet tall, we make them, you know, the shorter signs, because we think that that's more appropriate, that gives you more control over that. But like, once again, we, all the signs are the same size, same use, the only thing we're doing is allow them to keep up with the technology.
There's no circumstance where residents can have on a residential property?
No, but, and I, but I, but, but I think, I think what, that's a very good point, that I don't believe so, but I think that would be appropriate to add in this ordinance, right, Mark? I would think-
Yeah, I can't, I can't think of a situation-
I can't think of any, but I, I would hate to fight-
For example, home occupation, you're not allowed to have a sign, and that's really the only instance, but we can, we can-
Mailbox.
Mailbox, uh, house number. I, I would personally be against all of this, to have them in-
I, I, I think-
Every residential-
Do you, you allow contractor signs? 'Cause that's something that could conceivably, no, okay.
But, but, but I would think that, to be safe, we can add a provision at the end that says, "In no instance do, this does not apply to any type of residential use signage."
I mean, yeah, I think we could-
Rental properties that we have, let's say on JFK, they can have it, basically, that's what-
Remember like along JFK, they're, the rental properties that we have?
I don't know what you mean by rental, what, what apartment complex?
Yeah, that, that's, that's-
Well, if, if an apartment, if an apartment complex wanted to have a digital sign, this, this would allow, as part of their sign package, they could. If, 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 if you do not think that it's appropriate to have any residential uses, that's fine too. We can, we can preclude any residential uses from having a digital sign, which would include apartment complexes.
Yeah, I like that, I like that. I mean, I don't like the idea of having apartment complexes.
And that, and that shouldn't really need a digital sign, because-
Somebody wants it.
Either they have apartments for rent or they don't. It's just when they put up banners all along Route 27. Well, religious would be, relig- religious would be allowed, but remember again, that any house of worship is only allowed twenty-five square feet.
Oh, I'm, I'm meaning, on residence.
Well, First Baptist Church of Lincoln Gardens already has a primitive version of digital sign. And the reason they have that is because they got, before the Township Council changed the ordinance, they were granted a zoning permit and a construction permit. the ordinance, they were granted a zoning permit and a construction permit. Before, you know, they didn't put it up for a year and a half, because there was an issue with, something happened with some, you know, that wasn't supposed to happen, and it wasn't actually installed, but they had their permits, so our then attorney at that time, Leslie London, gave us an opinion that because they were approved, we could not, not allow them to put anything up, so we, that took about six months to work it, but that, that was, it's basically, right now, a pre-existing, non-conforming sign.
And Vince, I think really this is going to be also providing additional safety, because if you look at, to most of the house of worship, they have lights at night shining to their boards, and those lights, they're underground electric lights and all kinds of things, but it's always a concern for safety. With digital, you have very nice visibility at night, so, and you can really improve the safety, so I think it's a great idea.
So, so that Vince gets the, the direction here, so the, the residential, there was so many conversations going on, is, is, does the board have an opinion on for apartment complexes?
I don't want it on the compartment complexes.
And townhouse developments, et cetera, so residential?
I would say.
No residential use.
No, 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 residential.
Okay, so, and then, as far as places of worship.
Pandora's box, no.
So as far as places of worship, again, I just want to make sure, that is the one, places of worship and schools. Places of worship and schools, I just want to bring to your attention, I don't have an opinion on it, but those are the two non-residential uses that you find more commonly in residential zones.
Just about every school now, I mean, I think North Brunswick, New Brunswick, they all have.
Yeah, that's probably the most important use, honestly, the houses of worship and the schools, to have them, because they always have changing messages.
Right, right, right. And then, what, lastly, what about places of worship in schools that happen to be in historic districts?
I think the historic, wouldn't the Historic Preservation Commission have to weigh in on some of that?
It would be, they, they, it would get reviewed by them, but it would be, if it's in the ordinance, it would be a permitted, you know, use, so you could, if you felt appropriate, put something in the ordinance prohibiting that, and then that would be, that would be a variance then, and not something that just gets a permit.
Yeah.
That's something for you to, you, you may want to consider.
Could we put it in and say it's prohibited, except?
How do you feel about?
By approval of the Historic Commission? Or does that give the Historic Commission too much power?
Well, I, I think, I, I, the, they need approval, they need approval by the Historic Commission, and if they don't get approval by the Historic Commission, they don't get to put it up. I mean, I, that's just, if, if the Historic Commission says no, then they don't get an approval, we don't issue them a sign permit.
It's just like other things in historic districts.
But the Historic Commission doesn't have, they're still an advisory board.
They are absolutely not advisory, that, that's, they, they, they are not. We, we had to change the ordinance to be in accordance with CLG standards, which the CLG standards say that when they're going for a board approval, it's a recommendation. When they come, if Alex came and had an otherwise, you know, and you were in the historic district, and he had an otherwise conforming sign, alls he needs to do is go to Historic Commission. If the Historic Commission approves it, they can get the permit. If the Historic Commission does not approve it, they don't get the permit, and then they have every relief that they can take in accordance with law, but we had to make that change to be in accordance with the CLG, because our ordinance was not in accordance with the municipal land use law, with the type of commission that, that we have. We were kind of like a hybrid, the, the way we had it set up, but we had to make that change, so the commission does have the ability to say that.
In practice, the historic districts are mostly residential anyway, outside of, say, Rutgers Prep, and Chester's and East Millstone.
My, my recommendation for that would be to, you know, we're going to say that no residential uses, and we'll spell that out appropriately, we'll work with, we'll figure some language out with Peter to, to make that correct. I, I would leave the historic alone, because they, they have the ability in historic district to approve or disapprove it, and if it goes to the board, if that's just a recommendation, the board gets to, to make the decision on the, the signage.
Uh, uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I think the only case where that came up, as opposed to traditional sign for churches, is the Kingston Presbyterian Church, and they persuaded the Historic Commission to allow an internally lit sign, I would have preferred one where the light shines on it, but, but nonetheless, they do have an internally lit sign in a historic district, and maybe they can be persuaded to have a digital sign, which would, which would be kind of nicer than the internally lit one, so.
Yeah, so I guess, well, really, what tonight is for, is to determine if the planning board is okay with us setting these ordinances to the township council, and then you'll get another chance to review it, just like you did with the ordinance that Mark went over you tonight, because it'll be referred back to you before second reading, so we can have any other further comments that you have at that time.
One quick question, elimination of the digital signs, is that being addressed?
Well, tip, typically, digital signs are illuminated by themselves, there aren't, there isn't any additional illumination, because they're illuminated as part of the
For the brightness, because of, you know, digital sign clutter at that point, so.
We don't, we don't, we didn't put anything, we didn't put anything in the ordinance?
Yeah, we don't want it like Times Square everywhere we're driving, right?
No, well, and that's, that's the major reason why we said, you know, the, the, the one per sign, because we didn't want to have, typically.
But you're still not addressing the brightness, though.
I think.
The intensity of the lighting.
Because it's different for daytime and nighttime. I, I think you can find language somewhere about the, um, the brightness. Oh, and it's the main thing, is the distinction between what it has to be in the day and what it has to be at night.
Yeah, we can, we can.
Having dug through a lot of digital billboard.
Part of it, the, the problem may be, my recollection of the standard for the brightness was extremely technical, and I don't know how we're going to actually enforce that. I mean, the other part, I think it's going to be somewhat self-enforcing, because if the sign is too bright, it's not going to be readable.
Yeah.
If it's projecting out too much light, you're not going to see, you're not going to see the letters and the, and the graphics that are trying to be displayed.
I think you did a great job researching to figure out that eight seconds were necessary. I think it's important here to figure out how bright the sign should be, unless we're going to create a Times Square.
We can, we can find, we can find some language, and as Mark pointed out, typically, it's very technical, if, if, if we're not comfortable with the technical nature, I think we can work something out that can be more general in nature, that would enable us to, to enfor, to enforce it. I think it's going to be more toward the general nature, because most of what we looked at is, was for like the billboards, we didn't find, but we will, we'll have time, we'll, your concern is valid, and we'll, we'll take a look at that, and we'll get the appropriate language in there.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I just wanted to caution that the technology changes, so the intensity of the light and the, the way they do it, it changes, so I think it's important for us not to put unnecessary restriction, that later on, people were going to say, "Well, this technology is not available anymore, so you have to go to a new one and create all kinds of problem." I think the, the best way is to leave it, leeway, so we can really have a good technology for the commercial businesses to attract customers to their businesses.
And I, and I think we can accomplish both, I think, you know, Mark did a tremendous amount of research on the billboards, and Peter's been involved with digital signage and bill, I think we can find the appropriate language that'll cut the middle of that.
And, you know, ordinances can always be amended, I mean, 20 years ago, we wouldn't have envisioned this, right? So now, times change, we do it, so it's not like it's immutable.
Well, what, what we would regulate, in any case of results, results can be achieved by different technologies.
Yeah, good point.
So Seal, Seal had, Seals die in here.
Oh, don't, don't say that, Mike. She's got to chair next week's meeting.
Yeah, yeah, really.
Okay, I have seen a lot of very extravagant Christmas displays over the years, and some of them have digital signs. Are, can we put writing in there somehow that seasonal displays of a residential nature are not subject to this?
I, I, I would say that we don't want to do that, because we've, we've never had an issue with that before, we have never, I, I know in 13 years that I've been here, and Frank Hasner was here for 25 years, so in almost 40 years, there's never been an instance where anyone in this township enforced, or gave someone a violation for, for, for any type of.
Let me carry this a little further, I have seen where neighbors of the party involved that has all the light, the blinking lights and the digital, are, are, don't like that neighbor that, that has all that light.
And I, and I would say that's between the two neighbors, that we would not get involved in it.
Then you're, you're giving them the legal ability to, to.
No, we're, we're, we're not changing anything at all to do with holiday decorations, that, that's, we're not, that's, that's, there's a difference between signage and holiday decorations.
I, I would say.
This is a can of reindeer, we do nothing to get it to.
No, we, we, we do, that's why I said we don't want to do that.
Question for you, this is regarding the commercial advertisement, the big board they use, are we going to allow them to go digital also, in terms of the way you describe it now?
I don't, I don't quite understand what the.
Uh, on most of the roads, right, you have some big balls.
Big ones.
Yeah, where you have, uh, some commercial entities, placing advertisements, probably it could be a gym, or, um, Honda, or any of these big companies, right? Are we, are, are we going to say, okay, henceforth, we want you guys to go digital? Is that part of the?
No, we, we, we would never tell a company, nor do we have the ability to tell them that they have to go digital, or, or wood or anything else.
Are we making provision for them in case if they want to, uh, go digital?
Yes, that's all we're doing, they, they still have the ability to put all the other type of signage that's permitted now.
Right.
This just adds one more level with the new technology to allow them the digital, if, if the business wants to have their wood sign or the normal plastic signage, they're still able to do so.
Okay.
Vince, just, just for clarification, I think when service stations were, when we first allowed that, they were limited to colors, is there any thought of that, or, I, I don't have an opinion, but.
We, we didn't, we didn't add anything in there in return to, to colors, the reason why we put the certain amount of colors for it, because that was kind of, once again, the standard language that other municipalities used for the gas station signs, because some of them used to get very creative to kind of.
You're right.
And, and we wanted to, we wanted to keep them very simple at that time, so we just, pretty, I, honestly, we copied some other ordinances.
Vince, are there any townships in the area that they already gone digital?
Well, I, I can, I can't tell you, we, we didn't look at the other bit and see whether they were permitted on, I think you could just drive around, and you could see that there are thousands of other signs, whether someplace like South Brunswick specifically allows them, or ignore, I, I can't tell you, but if you look across the street on Route 27, there's a lot of digital signs, whether or not they're allowed or not, or they just, you know, ignore it, I can't tell you.
Okay, so I'm sure it's New York.
Peter, your, your comment.
Vince, just one thing, do, our, our sign ordinance, does it require the sign on-site to advertise only the business on-site, because with this and scrolling various messages, you could run the risk of it being an advertising board for.
We do not permit off-premise advertising, that's something that's specifically.
Okay.
So it's, it's not in there, but it's in another section that says you're specifically prohibited to advertise.
Right.
Off-premise, so that, that, that could not.
Wanted to make sure we had that covered, so, since you have multiple messages capable on one board at this point.
Thank you so much.
I, I, you know, I would say in response to that, I don't think it's a bad idea to repeat it here.
Yeah, never know.
No, 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 that's a good idea.
So I, I'm actually, I'm actually somewhat surprised, I thought we'd have, I, I knew there's always discussion around signs, because there just always is, always has been ever since I've been in the township, I'm a little surprised that there's no more, there's just like the body art thing that, not a thing.
Well, I think times change, I think 10 years ago, this, we had a discussion about digital signage on the planning board, we'd all be going, "Whoa, no, no, no." No. I mean, I mean, you know, it's just that the times change, and there's enough, there's enough pressure now with all the other signage, you hate to be, to put the township at any disadvantage whatsoever, and once again, we're, we're limiting it, we're not allowing them bigger, we're not allowing them to scroll or flash or blink or do any of those other things, so you're not going to get, you won't be able to have the sign like First Baptist has, that that scrolls, we're not permitting that, that's not the type of sign, we just want them to be able to display in, you know, a nicer, more, you know, I, there's some beautiful signage out there now, and if they want to be able to change it automatically every eight seconds, so Quick Check wants to be able to have eight different thing, or 12 different things in, you know, in a minute, what's the difference? So if everyone's okay, we'll, we're going, we're going to add those things, we're going to send it to council for introduction, and then it'll come back here for you to look at it again, to make sure you're okay with it in another month or so.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, I think, as you and I discussed, I mean, I think, oh, you know, the body art establishments, I never understood why they did that, I mean, I think the one thing I remember about Insanity, because I was on the board for that application, is I think it was right on the border of New Brunswick.
It was, it was close, it was down toward that end.
And they just didn't want that as their opening salvo that you drive into township, and the first thing you see is, is that, so they ended up relocating somewhere else, in town, I think, right?
They, they, they moved across the street, because Kovacs, it was in the Kovacs building, that now has been rebuilt by, by Dean Addy, and they moved across the street to where now Recon is building their mixed-use building, and the police had test, you know, gave testimony or reported, meaning that there had not been one complaint in the three or four years, because once again, those businesses are extremely regulated now, there's, they have to have auto-clavering devices, they all, almost every municipality requires them to be licensed, it, it's, it's a totally different situation, where, you know, they're, they're not allowed per law to even give a tattoo to someone who's visibly intoxicated, because, and if they are, they'll, 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 they'll be given a summons for that, there's, the regulations are, are very complicated for that.
Well, that was one of the issues when we heard Insanity, that, what was very helpful, that it really turned out that it's one of the most regulated state businesses.
Yeah.
That ever applied here.
Yep.
There's nothing we could do above and beyond.
So if we're all okay, we'll send it, and it'll come back to you as soon as council introduces it at your subsequent meeting. Thank you for your consideration.
And you are going to incorporate what are currently two ordinances about body art into one.
Yeah, I mean, it'll, it'll be one, yes, 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 I, for the sake of simplicity, so that you'd see them individually, it was, you know, she may actually do one ordinance, you know, chapter 112, and then it goes down, and we will probably do one ordinance for all of these, it's just simpler to show it to you individually, so that it's easier to discuss.
Okay, good, thanks Vince.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Meet next week, Seal is chair.